Let us bow our heads and feel the presence of the Lord. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come before you today as members of the Sangguniang Palalawigan, acknowledging your sovereignty and grace. We seek your blessings upon these legislative proceedings, that it may be guided by truth, justice, and compassion. Grant us the wisdom to deliberate on matters of importance with fairness and impartiality. Help us to listen attentively, speak with clarity, and understand one another's viewpoints. May our decision be guided by the principle of good governance and the welfare of our fellow citizens. Strengthen us with unity and collaboration, that we may be effective instrument of positive change. We entrust this gathering to your divine grace. In your holy name we pray. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Maga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Aayang Pilipinas. Oringuwanay. Amen. Ete. Man. Eh. Spirit. Ahamenamam. Ahamenamam. Yashanamam. Tawasumay. Pilipinas. Pilisay.
Ibaanawat or diwa. Nasanaw. Ah. Tugukinasi paglaun. Sanangan yunusna. Asanawinu panuotupita. Kamubuasun kapantap. Ah. Amayinu iba kau. Sa kuluopirin padahon. Angadungin kita bisnan. Sayon tunawon. Nabukita sa kau. Stan. Kungikiran. Asanaw. Asanawinu panuotupita. Kamubuasun kapantap. Amayinu iba kau. Sa kuluopirin padahon. Amayinu iba kau. Sa kuluopirin padahon. Amayinu iba kau. Sa kuluopirin padahon.
Di sakit ardu, nakusin diro.
Honorable Dato, Honorable Abalon, Honorable Tobongo, Honorable Iscedera, Honorable Galit, Honorable Giliyamak, Honorable Laudeno, Honorable Lion, Honorable Lucero, Honorable Miranda, Honorable Salutaga, Honorable Silvano, Honorable Singson, Honorable Uy. There are eleven members present, including the Presiding Officer.
Three and eleven members present. Presence of forums declared. We now formally start the session. Your team.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good morning to the Chair, members, member and all the staff. Good morning. Mr. Chairman, under item number six, considering that members are already furnished copies of the journals of proceedings as reflected in the order of business, I move that the reading be dispensed with referring to journals of proceedings dated October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Both are regular sessions and considered it as approved as presented. So move, Mr. Chairman.
It's a motion that we dispense with the reading of the journals of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and December nineteenth, twenty twenty four, regular session. I can see duly seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us now proceed with item number seven, calendar business. Under item is letter A, review of municipal ordinances and resolutions. First committee scheduled to render its committee report. We have the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations. Kindly please recognize the good Chairman of this committee, the honorable Don L. Abalon. Mr. Chairman.
The due Chairman of the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations, the honorable Don L. Abalon. Please write the names.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For behalf of the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations, I have the honor to render forty committee reports, Mr. Chair. That is only the ones identified in the agenda, and we will still be reporting additional reports for the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations during the other matters. But in the meantime, Mr. Chair, considering the voluminous reports that we have, may I move to incorporate into the records all the forty committee reports of the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations? I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Motion is carried. All forty committee reports of the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations are incorporated into the journals of Sangguniang.
And may I make an omnibus motion, Mr. Chair, for the approval of the committee reports, these forty committee reports? But I assure this body that I will make ah, um, another motion later on on the individual items as to the action taken by the committee, Mr. Chair. But in the meantime, I make an omnibus motion for the approval of the forty committee reports. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Pleasure the body duly seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered. All forty committee reports of the committee on finance, budget, and appropriations are approved and adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the authority and upon the authority of the committee, may I move to pass a resolution declaring revised Municipal Devolution Transition Plan, calendar year twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, and resolution number two hundred forty-four, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, valid and operative, subject to the provisions, conditions, and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Seconded objections? None. Committee reports.
On ordinance number sixty-three, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, may I move for the passage, to pass a resolution declaring ordinance number sixty-three, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objection? Motion scattered.
On ordinance number sixty-six, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring ordinance number sixty-six, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On ordinance number sixty-seven, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring ordinance number sixty-seven, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Just duly seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On ordinance number sixty-eight, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria, may I move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Jually seconded. Objections?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number seventeen, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Bobong, may I move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Seconded objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number twenty-four, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Bobong, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Jually seconded. Objections? Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number twenty-five, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Bobong, may I move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash ten dash two four seven of the municipality of Palapa, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Just duly seconded. Objection? None. Motion scattered.
On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash eleven dash two four nine of the municipality of Palapa, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash eleven dash two fifty of the municipality of Palapa, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Sure, jually seconded. Objections?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twelve dash two five eight of the municipality of Palapa, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Just duly seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twelve dash two six three of the municipality of Palapa, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number ten, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Las Navas, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objections? Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash two six eight dash thirty one of the municipality of Catarman, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash two six eight dash thirty two of the municipality of Catarman, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objection? Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero five of the municipality of Gamay, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twelve of the municipality of Gamay, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty four dash thirteen of the municipality of Gamay, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty four dash fourteen of the municipality of Gamay, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion. Jually seconded. Objections? None. The committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On resolution number forty-eight, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Allen, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring both the resolution number forty-eight, series of twenty twenty four and the supplemental annual investment plan for fiscal year twenty twenty four of the municipality of Allen, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is jually seconded. Objections? None.
Mr. Chair. On municipal resolution number twenty twenty four dash seventy-one of the municipality of Lapine, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring both the resolution number twenty twenty four dash seventy-one and supplemental annual investment program for the year twenty twenty four of the municipality of Lapine, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Sangguniang Bayan Resolution Number one five six, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of San Roque, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring both the Sangguniang Bayan Resolution Number one five six and the supplemental annual investment plan for calendar year twenty twenty four of the municipality of San Roque, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objection? Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number sixty-seven, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of San Roque, may I move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number eighty, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of San Roque, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number zero zero five, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Katubig, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion is jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On SB ordinance number twenty twenty four dash ten of the municipality of Rosario, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objection? Jually seconded. Objections? None. Motion scattered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On ordinance number twenty-one, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Beri, may I respectfully move may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion duly seconded objections, none motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number zero nine dash twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Kapo, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Any objections, none motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number ten, series of twenty dash twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Kapo, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objections, none motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number zero zero six, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Katubi, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objections.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Lepinig, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objection, none motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number fourteen dash eleven, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Lopez de Vega, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero six, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Mapanas, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objections, none, motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number thirty-nine, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Montragon, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
None motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number forty, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Montagon, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
None, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero six zero of the municipality of San Isidro, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Objections, none, motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero six one of the municipality of series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Isidro, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Any objections, here is none, motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On ordinance number series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Jose, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Second, objections, none, motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On ordinance number twenty-one, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Jose, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Second. Motion duly seconded, are there any objection, here is none, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Napa La Londo, the majority leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. With the adoption of the forty committee reports by the committee on finance budget and appropriations, and in order to pave the way for its consideration on final reading, to move that rules be suspended. To move, Mr. Chairman.
Duly seconded objections, none resolutions approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring resolution number forty-two four-four series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Victoria Northern Summer valid and operative. To move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion duly seconded, are there any objections, now this motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval of of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number sixty-three, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Victoria Northern Summer, valid and operative. To move, Mr. Chairman.
Any objections?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number sixty-six, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Victoria Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number sixty-seven, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Victoria Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion duly seconded objections, none resolutions approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number sixty-eight, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Victoria Northern Summer, valid and operative.
There being, there being objection, resolution is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number seventeen, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Bobon, Northern Summer, valid and operative.
There being objection, resolution is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number twenty-four, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Bobon Northern Summer, valid and operative.
There being objections, none, resolution is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number twenty-five, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Bobon Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one zero dash two four seven of the municipality Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative.
There being objections, this is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eleven dash two four nine of the municipality Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative.
There being objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eleven dash two five zero of the municipality Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash two five eight of the municipality Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion duly seconded objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash two six three of the municipality Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number one zero, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Palapag Las Navas Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion duly seconded objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash two six eight dash thirty-one of the municipality of Catarman Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion duly seconded objections, none, this is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash two six eight dash thirty-two of the municipality of Catarman Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion duly seconded objections, none, this is approved.
Move for the approval of of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero five of the municipality of Gamay Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion duly seconded objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on third and final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve of the municipality Gamay Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion duly seconded objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen of the municipality Gamay Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Should you be seconded objections, none, this is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fourteen of the municipality Gamay Northern Summer, valid and operative. I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation number forty-eight, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Allen Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Should you be seconded objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-one of municipality Lepinig Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring Sangguni Ambayan Resolution Number one five six, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Roque Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number sixty-seven, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Roque Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number eighty, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Roque Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number zero zero five series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Katubi Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring SB ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one zero of the municipality Rosario Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number twenty-one, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Biri Northern Summer, valid and operative. I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number zero nine series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Kapo Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number one zero dash twenty twenty-four of the municipality Kapo Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number zero zero six, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Katubi Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-four of the municipality Lepinig Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number fourteen, series of uh, fourteen dash eleven, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Lopez de Vega, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring appropriation ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero six series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality Mapanas Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number thirty-nine, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Montagon Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Any objections, none, this is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution uh, on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number forty, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Montagon Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero six zero of the municipality of San Isidro Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number zero six one, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Isidro Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number sixteen, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality San Jose Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number twenty-one, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Jose Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, this is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us now proceed, Mr. Chair. Uh, still under the consideration of the review of municipal ordinances and resolution under item number two, the next committee to render its committee report, we have the committee on social services. Finally, please again recognize the Honorable Don Ela Balon to consider two items, and the items are letter A and B, Mr. Chairman.
The good chairman of committee on social services, the Honorable Don Ela Balon, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For, and in behalf of the committee on social services, I have the honor to render our committee reports on two items. First, on the Sangguni Ambayan Resolution Number one three seven, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Roque. The subject resolution adopts the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six municipal action plan for the Pantawid Familiang Filipino program for four piece in the municipality of San Roque. This is in line with the DSWD DILG Joint Memorandum Circular number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one, whereby all provinces, cities, and municipalities with identified four-piece household beneficiaries are encouraged to support the full implementation of the four-piece, through among others, the inclusion of a municipal action plan related to the Pantawid Familia implementation in the LGO's comprehensive development plan. It encourages LGOs to pass social protection measures and implement post-program interventions to prevent graduates from falling back into poverty. Additionally, the DSWD ensures that the case folders of existing beneficiaries are formally endorsed to the respective LGOs ensuring continued assistance and collaboration to support the socioeconomic advancement of former four-piece families. The adoption of this plan is a clear recognition by the LGO concerned of the four-piece program as an essential tool for poverty alleviation and sustainable socioeconomic development. This action plan is likewise in conformity with the municipalities mandate under section sixteen of Republic Act seventy-one sixty, also known as the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, to promote the general welfare of its citizens. This committee respectfully recommends and moves for the adoption of this committee report and to declare Sangguni Ambayan Resolution Number one three seven, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of San Roque, valid and operative, subject to the provisions of existing laws, rules, and regulations and further upon adoption of this committee report and approval of this committee's recommendation to pass a resolution to that effect. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
Motion duly seconded, objection, none to be reported, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two of the municipality of San Antonio, municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two prioritizes exited Pantawid Familia Filipino program households in the delivery of services by the municipality of San Antonio. This may be in line with Republic Act number one one three one zero and DSWD DILG Joint Memorandum Circular number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. However, this committee found the definition of exited household beneficiary is not in harmony or conformity with the definition prescribed by the said Joint Memorandum Circular number twenty twenty-two.
with the definition prescribed by the said Joint Memorandum Circular Number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. Further, section three of the subject ordinance gives priority to the exited four-piece beneficiaries priority in the availability of services and interventions or other appropriate or similar programs offered by the local government unit and other government agencies or accredited private institutions, as well as in the availability of the employment facilitation services provided by the Public Employment Services Office or the local government unit or other employment programs of appropriate government agencies implementing the same. This committee believes that such prioritization contravenes the Equal Protection Clause. While the fundamental right of equal protection of, of the law is not absolute, but is subject to reasonable classification, the classification must be germane to the purpose of the law and must apply to all those belonging to the same class and such classification to be valid must, number one, rest on substantial distinction, number two, be germane to the purpose of the law, number three, not be limited to existing conditions only, and number four, apply equally to all members of the same class. This committee believes that there is a failure to comply with the first and second requirements. There is nothing in RA eleven three one zero as well as in Joint Memorandum Circular Number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one that requires to prioritize those exited household beneficiaries. On the other hand, section four four seven empowered the Sangguniang Bayan to approve ordinances imposing penalties for violation of a municipal ordinance. As such, this committee found the subject ordinance to be in substantial compliance with RA seventy-one sixty, RA eleven three one zero, Joint Memorandum Circular Number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one, and other pertinent laws, rules, and regulations, except the following provisions. Number one, section two B, which is the definition of the exited household, section two, and number two, section three, and number three, section nine thereof, which should be declared inoperative. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves for the passage of a resolution adopting this committee report and declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two of the Municipality of San Antonio valid and operative and declaring valid and operative in part and declaring sections two B, three, and nine thereof inoperative, subject to the conditions herein prescribed and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded, objections, none, committee report is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, with the adoption of the committee report by, of the two committee report by the Committee on Social Services, and in order to pave the way for its consideration and final reading, I assume that the rules be suspended. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded, objections, none, committee report is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring Sangguniang Bayan Resolution Number number one three seven series of twenty twenty-four of, of the Municipality of San Roque, Northern Summer, valid and operative. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded, any objections? None, motion is carried, resolution is approved, final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two of twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two of the Municipality of San Antonio, Northern Summer, valid and operative in part. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded, objections, none, resolution is approved on final reading. You mean suspension?
May I proceed, Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, next to render its committee report under the review of municipal ordinances and resolution is the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability. Kindly please recognize the good Chairman, the Honorable Don Ela Balon, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I render our committee reports on from the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, may I take this opportunity first to, as Chairman of the Committee on Housing, Land Use, Zoning, and Agrarian Reform, to move for the deferment of the rendition of the committee report on municipal ordinance number eleven series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Kapul. Until next session, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections, none, consideration of the committee report as mentioned by the Honorable Balon, Mr. Chair, by committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For and in behalf of the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, I have the honor to render our committee reports on three items. First, on municipal ordinance number twenty-five series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Mondragon. The subject ordinance regulates the operation of business establishments, manufacturing, sealing, or distributing P and P uniforms, insignias, and other accotments, imposing penalties for violations thereof. This is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sangguniang Bayan as prescribed under section four four seven of RA seventy-one sixty, particularly subsection A, paragraph three, sub-paragraph two, and in accordance with executive order number two nine seven. Accordingly, this committee most respectfully move for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number twenty-five series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Mondragon valid and operative, subject to the conditions herein prescribed and the provisions of existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded, objections, none, committee report is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty-two series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Mondragon. The subject ordinance adopting the municipal hem of the mun, of the Municipality of Mondragon mandating its singing in certain public and private functions and imposing penalty for violations thereof. This is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sangguniang Bayan in accordance with section four four seven, RA seventy-one sixty, in relation to section twenty-two, RA seventy-one sixty. Accordingly, this committee most respectfully moves for the adoption of this committee report and to declare municipal ordinance number twenty-two series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Mondragon valid and operative, subject to the conditions herein prescribed and the provisions of existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded, objections, none, committee report is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash two six one of the Municipality of Palapag. The subject ordinance mandates decor few hours for minors from nine PM to four AM, imposing penalties and prescribing interventions. This is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sangguniang Bayan to enact ordinances for the general welfare of the municipality and its inhabitants as prescribed under section four four seven of RA seventy-one sixty, particularly subsection A, paragraph one, sub-paragraph two, and subsection A, paragraph one, sub-paragraph three. This ordinance shall be considered for the protection of children. Further, the penalties imposed must be in accordance with as prescribed by RA seventy-one sixty and RA ninety-three forty-four as amended by RA one oh six thirty. Accordingly, this committee most respectfully moves for the adoption of this committee report and to declare municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash two six one of the Municipality of Palapag valid and operative, subject to the conditions herein prescribed and the provisions of existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Seconded, objections, none, committee report is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I join the leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the adoption of the three committee report under item is letter A, B, and C by the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, I assume that the rules be suspended. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Objections, none, resolution is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty-five series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Mondragon, Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Objections, none, resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval of a resolution uh, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number third twenty-two series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Mondragon, Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion is duly seconded, objection, none, resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash two six one of the Municipality of Palapag, Northern Summer, valid and operative.
Motion is duly seconded, objections, none, resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now proceed with the next item under item number five. Considering that item number four has been, has been deferred, uh, this is a joint committee report between the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganizations and by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Operations. The subject ordinance refers to ordinance number twenty-two series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Allen, Northern Summer, entitled an ordinance creating the Municipal Cooperative Development Office, MCDO, in the local government unit of Allen, Northern Summer. For our, for the joint findings and observation, the joint committee find that enactment of the subject ordinance is well within the power and authority of the LGU to design, approve, and implement the organizational structure and staffing pattern pursuant to the provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one. Provided however, that the same shall have to follow the requirements in chapter nine of the Manual on Position, Qualification, and Compensation Scheme of the Local Government Units and the minimum standard and guidelines prescribed by the Civil Service Commission uh, Memorandum Circular Number twelve series of twenty twenty-two. The joint committee respectfully recommend to the Sangguniang Panlawigan that a resolution be passed to declare ordinance number twenty-two series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Allen, Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to the aforementioned condition submitted for resolution this thirty-first day of January twenty twenty-four, signed by this by this presentation as Chairman of Committee on Civil Service Appointments and by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Operations chaired by the Honorable Balon and majority of the members as selected in the committee report. I assume for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded, objections, none, motion is carried, committee report is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, uh, for the immediate consideration of the committee report as adopted by the co, uh, by the commi, by the Joint Committee of the Civil Service Appointments and Registration and by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Operations, and in order to pave the way for immediate consideration on third and final reading, I assume that the rules be suspended. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Duly seconded, objections, none, rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number twenty-two series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Allen, Northern Summer, valid and operative. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded, are there any objections? The chair hears none, motion is carried. The resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next committee to render its committee report is scheduled the Committee on Health. May we know from the Committee on Health if, uh, in the absence of the good Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the Honorable, uh, Honorable Martis Jagilama would like to render for and in behalf of the Committee on Health, the committee report. Kindly please recognize.
For the committee report of the Committee on Health, the Honorable Martis Jagilama, as Vice Chair of the Committee is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the committee is, uh, ready with only one report, Mr. Chair. So before I proceed, I would like to move for the deferment of the consideration of uh, item letter B, which is, uh, for, uh, resolu ordinance number one series of twenty twenty-five of the of the Municipality of San Roque. So move for its deferment, Mr. Chair.
I second.
Motion to defer consideration of item letter B. The motion is duly seconded. Are there any objections? None. Consideration of item letter B is here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the committee for item letter A, for the Committee on Health, to which was referred municipal ordinance number thirty-three series of twenty twenty-four of the Municipality of Mondragon, Northern Summer, entitled an ordinance regulating the dispensing, selling, and reselling of pharmaceutical products in sarisari stores and other similar retail outlets in the Municipality of Mondragon and providing penalties for violations thereof, has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguniang Panlawigan with the following findings and observations. Number one, the enactment of the subject ordinance is in pursuance of section sixteen of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one. Second, the subject ordinance is also consistent with the DILG Memorandum circular number twenty twenty-two dash zero twenty-five dated March two uh, twenty twenty-two, which mandates all local government units to prohibit the sale, distribution, and reselling of pharmaceutical products in sarisari store and other similar establishments. And third, the subject ordinance is likewise in accordance with section thirty of Republic Act Number ten nine one eight, also known as the Philippine Pharmacy Act, which prohibits the compounding, dispensing, selling, or reselling of pharmaceutical products through retail drug outlets not licensed by the Food and Drug Administration. Therefore, this committee respectfully recommends that a resolution be passed, uh, to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative, provided however that its implementation shall be in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulation. Uh, this is, the committee report is signed by the Chair of, uh, the committee, Honorable Gilbert F. Lyon, uh, Honorable Lisa C. Sidera, and yours truly as Vice Chair of the committee. I move for the approval of this committee report, Mrs. Chair.
Second.
Duly seconded, objections, none, committee report is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We need leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. With the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Health, uh, and in order, and in order to uh, and in order, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, let's move that the rules be suspended. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, move for approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring municipal ordinance number thirty-three, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Mondragon Northern Summer, valid and operative. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Is duly seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under item, uh, number eight, Mr. Chairman, the next committee to render this committee report will be the Committee on Science, Information, Communication, and Technology.
Committee on Environment.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, 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 I'd like to replace my, my manifestation, uh, under item number seven, I mean, Mr. Chairman. And so, Mr. Chairman, under item number seven, uh, next committee report to render is this on climate change adaptation. Uh, just wait, Honorable Lucero. Considering, Mr. Chairman, in the absence of the good, uh, Chairman of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change Adaptation, and to render the committee report for on behalf of its, of its good chairman, kindly please recognize Lucero as the Vice Chair of the said committee. Kindly please, Mr. Chairman.
On Lucero, you are not being allowed by the majority.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I move for a one-minute suspension, Mr. Chairman, so that the good Majority Leader could, uh... Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change Adaptation, to which was referred municipal ordinance number thirty-one, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Mondragon Northern Summer, entitled an ordinance designating Mondragon Esplinad as the public park and green open space in Mondragon Northern Summer, providing measures for the beautification, development, maintenance, and management thereof, and appropriating the necessary funds therefore, has considered and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguneang Panglawigan with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative for being consistent with section sixteen, the General Welfare Clause of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, provided however, that its implementations have been accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Committee report is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change Adaptation, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, let's move that the rules be suspended. Move, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, move for approval of a resolution and final reading, declaring municipal ordinance number thirty-one, series of twenty twenty-four of the, of the municipality of Mondragon Northern Summer, valid and operative. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, she is seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us now proceed with the next committee to render this committee report under item number eight, the Committee on Science, Information, Communication, and Technology. May we know from the members, Vice Chair of the said committee, if they are ready to render the committee report for in behalf of the chairman, uh, the Committee on Science, Information, Science, Information, Communication, and Technology. And considering, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, seems that uh, committee rep- uh, committee report, uh, under the said committee is not yet available for, for, to render this committee report, uh, and so, remove that the consideration of which be deferred until the next session. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Consideration of the committee report of the Committee on Science, Information, Communication, and Technology is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us now proceed with item number nine, under the review of municipal ordinances and resolution. Uh, scheduled to render this committee report, we have the Committee on Women and Family Relations. We have uh, three items, and their items is letter A, B, and C. Kindly please recognize the good chair, Chairperson of the said committee, the Honorable Lisa C. Isidira, Mr. Chairman.
Chairperson of the Committee of Women and Family Relations, the Honorable Lisa C. Isidira, starting lines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In behalf of the Committee on Women and Family Relations, I hereby render three committee report. First, the municipal ordinance number thirty-four, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Mondragon Northern Summer, entitled an ordinance prohibiting acts of online sexual abuse and exploitation of children in Mondragon Northern Summer with corresponding penalties, thereafter providing a supportive environment for the survivors and providing fund thereof. Has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguneang Panglawigan with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative, considering that the enactment of the subject ordinance is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sangguneang Bayan of Mondragon as prescribed under section forty-four-four-seven, paragraph A, sub-paragraph one and five of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, provided however, that each implementation shall be in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations, as well as to the recommendations and suggestions for the Provincial Legal Office dated January seventeen, twenty twenty-five, which is her to attach and made an integral part of this committee report, submitted for the resolution this thirty-first day of January twenty twenty-five. Signed by the Majority Committee Members, Chair Lisa C. Isidira, Vice Chairman Honorable Yunita Laudino, Members Mariis Giliyamak and Honorable Gina Silbano. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Committee report is adopted.
Next committee report, municipal ordinance number twenty-two-four dash twelve dash two-five Palapag Northern Summer, num- entitled an ordinance localizing the applicability of the Republic Act number one-one-nine-thirty, known as Anti-Online Sexual Abuse or Exploitation of Children and Anti-Child Sexual Abuse or Export, Exploitation Materials Act in the municipality of Palap- Palapag Northern Summer. Has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguneang Panglawigan with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative, considering that the enactment of the, of the subject ordinance is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sangguneang Bayan of Palapag as prescribed under section four-four-seven, paragraph A and sub-paragraph one and five of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, provided however, that each implementation but must, shall be in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations, as well as to the recommendation suggestions from the Provincial Legal Office dated January seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Submitted this resolution this thirty-day of the, of January twenty twenty-five, signed by the Majority Member of the said committee. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded. Are there any objections? None. The committee report is adopted.
Next committee report, an ordinance, municipal, uh, municipal ordinance number zero-two, series of twenty twenty-five of the municipality of San Roque Northern Summer, entitled an ordinance strengthening the pre-marriage orientation and counseling program through the adoption and implementation of the POP COM D O H, this W D P S A D I L G Joint Memorals, Memorandum Circular number one, series of twenty eighteen in the municipality of San Roque Northern Summer. Has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguneang Panglawigan with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative, considering that the enactment of the subject ordinance for being consistent with the provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, provided however, that each implementation be in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations. Submitted for a resolution this thirty-first day of January twenty twenty-five, signed by the Majority Member of this said committee, Chairperson Lisa C. Isidira, Vice Chair Honorable Yunita Laudino, and Honorable Mariis Giliyamak, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Committee report is adopted. We need to leave her.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of, of the three commit- by the Committee on Women, Family, and Family Relations, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, let's move that the rules be suspended. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring municipal ordinance number thirty-four, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality of Mondragon Northern Summer, valid and operative. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Are there any objection? None. Motion is carried. Resolution is approved on final reading.
I move for approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring municipal ordinance number twenty-two-four dash twelve dash two-five-nine of the municipality of Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final reading.
I move for approval of a resolution and final reading, declaring, declaring municipal ordinance number zero-two, series of twenty twenty-four of the municipality San Roque Northern Summer, valid and operative. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let, uh, the, the next committee report, Mr. Chairman, is the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. Kindly please recognize the Honorable Gerardo Gerald Angelo Miranda, Mr. Chairman.
For the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, the Honorable Gerardo Gerald K. Miranda, Chairman of the Committee, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Majority Leader. On behalf of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, uh, we have prepared a committee report. The Committee on Youth and Sports Development, to which was referred municipal ordinance number twenty-two-four dash twenty-seven of the municipality of San Antonio Northern Summer, entitled an ordinance amending section two of municipal ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-three, entitled an ordinance institutionalizing the annual conduct bola contra drug activities in the municipality of San Antonio Northern Summer, has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguneang Panglawigan with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid for being consistent with the pertinent provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, and as such, there is no legal impediment to its implementation without prejudice to the subsequent declaration that may be made by competent authorities of any provision therein being uncon- unconstitutional, unlawful, ultra-very, or inoperative. Submitted for a resolution this thirty-first day of January twenty twenty-five, Taman Northern Summer, signed by this representation as Chairman, signed Honorable Gina O. Silbano, Vice Chairman, signed Honorable Quintin V. Saludaga, Member. Uh, I move for the option, I move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chairman. I so move.
Second.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Committee report is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, and in order, in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, let's move that the rules be suspended. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval of a resolution and final reading, declaring municipal ordinance number twenty-two-four dash twenty-seven of the municipality of San Antonio Northern Summer, valid. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Are there any objections? None. The motion is carried. The resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the last committee report under the review of municipal ordinances and resolution. We have the Committee on Engineering, Public Works, and Highways, chaired by the co- by the good chairman, the Honorable Quintin Borges Saludaga. Kindly please recognize.
Honorable Quintin V. Saludaga, Chairman of the Committee on Engineering, Public Work, and Highways, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, my partner, Majority Leader. On Committee on Engineering, Public Works, and Highways, uh, I have the honor to report on resolution number twenty-two-five dash six-two-two of municipality of Palapag Northern Summer, entitled Resolution Adapting the Farm-to-Market Road Network Plan, E F M R N P for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight of municipality of Palapag Northern Summer. The subject resolutions adapted the farm-to-market road network plan of municipality of Palapag Northern Summer. The said plan was previously approved by the Municipal Development Council, M D C, and endorsed to the Sangguneang Bayan to and by virtue of M D C Resolution number eleven, series of twenty twenty-four. This committee submits that the said farm-to-market road plan is in substantial compliance with Republic Act seventy-one sixty and its I R R and other pertinent laws, rules, and regulations, and concludes no legal impediments for the same to be operative. The la- the local government unit concerned, however, is enjoined to ensure the provisions of availability of funds necessary to carry out the P P A, P P As of the plan and fully comply with the mandatory vegetarian provisions in actual implementations of the plan. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves to declare the farm-to-market market road network plan of municipality of Palapag Northern Summer under enabling resolution number twenty-two-five dash six-two-two of municipality of Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned above and as prescribed by the existing laws, rules, and regulations, regulations. Further, upon the approval of this committee recommendations to pass the resolution to that effect, submitted for resolution this thirty-first day of January twenty twenty-five, signed by the Majority Members, uh, um, Albert, Honorable Albert Dosero, Donna Avalon, and, um, this humble representation. With this, Chair, Chairman, I move for the adoptions of this committee report.
Second.
Motion for the adoption of committee report is seconded. There any objections? None. Move in the spirit. Committee report is adopted. Thank you, Honorable Saludaga, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Engineering, Public Works, and Highways, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, let's move that the rules be suspended. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring resolution number twenty-two-five dash six-two-two of the municipality of Palapag Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by exist- existing laws, rules, and regulations. Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final reading. Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let us now proceed with the next item, the order bill of the order business under item number eight, the- of the order of business under item number eight, the privileges and question are may we know from the members would like to be to make use of item number eight, privileges and question are and considering that no members would like to be recognized, we now proceed with the next item, the matters. Uh Mister Chairman, uh the Honorable Don Lovely Abalon would like to be recognized.
Don Abalon.
Uh Mister Chair, perhaps the majority floor leader is thinking of joining the police force because it has been the practice of our Philippine National Police to always recite the complete name, including the middle name. So my gratitude to incoming police lieutenant Victoria Marino Singson.
Thank you, Honorable Abalon, but I'm not interested.
Uh Mister Chair, earlier, uh when the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations rendered this forty committee reports uh through this representation, I made manifestation that we will be rendering four additional committee reports for the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations that were not included in the agenda. And so here I am now, Mister Chair. Uh if I may be allowed, I will be rendering four committee reports.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chair. On ordinance number twenty four, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin the subject ordinance enacted fiscal year twenty twenty four general fund supplemental budget number zero four of the municipality of Alin appropriating the total amount of five hundred sixty six thousand six hundred sixty four pesos for purposes stated therein. This is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sanggunyang Bayan as provided for under section four four seven of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety one. Further, the local finance committee in its report dated fourteen January twenty twenty five which is served by incorporated Herto by reference and made integral part thereof found the subject ordinance to be in substantial compliance with R A seventy one sixty and recommended that the same be declared operative subject to the conditions and observations stipulated in the said report. This committee concurs with the findings and recommendations of the local finance committee. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves to pass a resolution adopting this committee report and declaring ordinance number twenty four, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned above under prescribed by existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mister Chair.
Before the consideration, Majority Leader, please.
Uh Mister Chairman, uh in order to pave the way for the uh immediate consideration of the committee report, I I move that the rules be suspended. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Rules are suspended. There is pending motion for the adoption of the committee report. Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Committee reports adopted.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I reiterate my earlier motion for the passage of a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring ordinance number twenty four, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report under prescribed by existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mister Chair.
There being no objections? Committee report is adopted. Majority Leader.
Uh thank you, Mister Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report and in uh preparing to ordinance number twenty four, series twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin Northern Summer and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, to move that the rules be suspended.
Judi seconded. Objections? None. Internal rules is suspended.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chair, I move for approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number twenty four, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin Northern Summer. Uh we declared valid and operative. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, for the second uh committee report, uh which is not included in the order of business and in order to pave the way for its consideration, I move that the rules be suspended. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Suspended. Honorable Abalon, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. On ordinance number twenty five, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin the subject ordinance enacted fiscal year twenty twenty four general fund supplemental budget number four appropriating the total amount of five hundred sixty six thousand six hundred sixty four pesos for purposes stated therein. This is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sanggunyang Bayan as provided for under section four four seven of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety one. The grant of service recognition incentive is in accordance with the Administrative Order number twenty seven and budget circular number twenty twenty four dash seven and the performance enhancement incentive is in accordance with circular later number twenty twenty four dash seventeen. Further, the local finance committee in its report dated fourteen January twenty twenty five which is served by incorporated Herto by reference and made integral part thereof found the subject ordinance to be in substantial compliance with R A seventy one sixty and recommended that the same be declared operative, subject to the conditions and observations stipulated in this report. This committee concurs with the findings and recommendations of the local finance committee. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves to pass a resolution adopting the committee report on declaring ordinance number twenty five, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin valid and operative subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report under prescribed by existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mister Chair.
Second.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. The committee reports adopted. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chair, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Budget and Appropriations referring to ordinance number twenty five, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin Northern Summer and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, to move that rules be suspended.
Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chair, I move for approval for resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number twenty five, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Alin Northern Summer valid and operative. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, for the third committee report in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration uh by the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations, I move that the rules be suspended. To move, Mister Chairman.
Objections? None. Rules are suspended. Honorable Abalon, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. On municipal ordinance number forty one, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Montracon the subject ordinance enacted fiscal year twenty twenty four general fund supplemental budget number four of the municipality of Montracon appropriating total amount of three million nine hundred ninety thousand pesos for purposes stated therein. This is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sanggunyang Bayan as provided for under section four four seven of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety one. Further, the local finance committee in its report dated fourteen January twenty twenty five which is served by incorporated Herto and by reference and made integral part thereof, found the subject ordinance to be in substantial compliance with R A seventy one sixty and recommended that the same be declared operative subject to the conditions and observations stipulated in this report. This committee concurs with the findings and recommendations of the local finance committee. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves to pass a resolution adopting this committee report on declaring municipal ordinance number forty one series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Montracon, this province valid and operative subject to the conditions mentioned above and thus prescribed by existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mister Chair.
Second.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Committee reports adopted.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Mister Committee Report by the Committee on Budget uh Finance, Budget and Appropriations referring to municipal ordinance number forty one, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Montracon Northern Summer and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, to move that the rules be suspended. To move, Mister Chairman.
Judi seconded. Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I move for the ad for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring municipal ordinance number forty one series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Montracon Northern Summer valid and operative. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final reading.
And for the last committee report, uh under uh uh for immediate consideration of this committee report, I so move that the rules be suspended. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Internal rules is suspended. Honorable Abalon.
Thank you, Mister Chair. On ordinance number twenty twenty four dash eleven dash two five one of the municipality of Palapag the subject ordinance enacted fiscal year twenty twenty four general fund supplemental budget number fourteen of the municipality of Palapag appropriating the total amount of one hundred forty five thousand one hundred pesos intended for other professional services. This is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sanggunyang Bayan as provided for under section four four seven of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety one. Further, the local finance committee in its report dated eleven December twenty twenty four which is served by incorporated Herto by reference and made integral part thereof, found the subject ordinance to be in substantial compliance with R A seventy one sixty and recommended that the same be declared operative subject to the conditions and observations stipulated in this report. This committee concurs with the findings and recommendations of the local finance committee. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves to pass a resolution adopting this committee report and declaring ordinance number twenty twenty four dash eleven dash two five one of the municipality of Palapag valid and operative subject to the conditions mentioned above and thus prescribed by existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mister Chair.
Second.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Committee reports adopted.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mister Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations referring to ordinance number twenty twenty four dash eleven dash two five one of the municipality Palapag Northern Summer and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading, to move that the rules be suspended.
Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chair, I move for approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance number twenty twenty four dash eleven dash two five one of the municipality Palapag Northern Summer valid and operative. To move, Mister Chairman.
Judi seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final reading. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, uh I have a committee report to be rendered. Uh this is a joint committee report between the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Organisation and the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations. Uh I'd like to ask the indulgence of my members uh focus body to consider the this joint committee report. With this, Mister Chairman I move that the internal rules be suspended. To move, Mister Chairman.
Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. This is a joint committee report between the Civil Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganisation and by the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations. This subject ordinance refers to ordinance number sixty nine, series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria Northern Summer ordinance creating the additional position in the municipal government of Victoria Northern Summer. For the findings and observation number one, the enactment of the subject ordinance is is well within the power and authority of the L G U to design, approve and implement the organisational structure and staffing staffing pattern pursuant to the pertinent provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety one. Findings number two, the funds intended for the purpose were taken from the supplemental budget number seven series of twenty twenty four as authorized under ordinance number number sixty three series of twenty twenty two twenty twenty four of the municipality of the municipality of Victoria which was recommended valid and operative by the local finance committee dated January third twenty twenty five provided however that the implementation of the same shall be in accordance with the provisions of section five of the Civil Service Commission's memorandum circular number twelve series of twenty twenty two on the guidelines and standards in the establishment of organisational structure and staffing patterns in the local government units. For our joint recommendation, the the joint committee respectfully recommend to the Sanggunyang Palaluwigan that a resolution be passed to declare ordinance number sixty nine series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria Northern Summer valid and operative, subject to the permission and conditions submitted this thirty first day of uh January twenty twenty five, Tarman Northern Summer. Uh Mister Chairman, this was, this is duly signed by this representation as Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganisation and by the Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations the Honorable Abalon and by the majority of the members. I so move for the adoption of the joint committee report, Mister Chairman.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee report. Judi seconded. Objections? None. The joint committee reports is adopted.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, with the adoption of the joint committee report as reported uh out by this representation and in order to move and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and final reading I so move that the rules be suspended. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on final reading declaring ordinance ordinance number sixty nine series of twenty twenty four of the municipality of Victoria Northern Summer valid and operative. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Resolution is approved on final reading.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Let us now proceed with uh still under the other matters. Uh before I we proceed with item is mulater A, we may may uh uh may I inquire from the secretary if there are items considered to be certified to a sergeant?
There are none, Mister Chair.
Uh thank you, Secretary. Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh Mister Chair, under item is mulater A and the other matters uh municipal ordinances or solution endorsed to the office of the Honorable Honorable Vice Governor Presiding Chair and were and were referred to the appropriate committees, Mister Chairman, I move that under the items number one to item number thirty nine at the reading be dispensed with and considered as incorporated in the journals into the records of the Sanggunyang Palaluwigan. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. All items under item number one and be incorporated into the records of the Sanggunyang Palaluwigan. Honorable Abalon.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I just would like to make manifest that number seven among the thirty nine items, number seven, which is municipal ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twenty two of the municipality of San Antonio, has already been reported out by the Committee on Social Services earlier, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Uh thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh let me take note of uh under item number seven as manifested by Honorable Abalon that the that item has already been reported out by the by the committee. And so, Mister Chairman, if you have no items to be considered and before we move for the last item, it is adjournment, move for one one minute suspension.
Session suspended for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chair, considering that I've already tackled all the order all the items in order of business the last items will be proper. I move for the adjournment of a regular session until the next session is scheduled on February three twenty twenty five, Mister Chairman. To move, Mister Chairman.
Motion is duly seconded. Objections? None. Session is adjourned until February three at ten o'clock in the morning.